The first step towards achieving your dreams is having the right coach. Get the best education with Amaze Academy and make your AE civil SSC GE dreams come true. Download the app now.
Hello my dear students, welcome to Amaze Academy. Get ready to be amazed. I am here for pollution control board examination. I have taken 40 questions in this session. In the last minute provision time, we will discuss these questions. The previous questions on the pollution control board examination are discussed here. Before starting this session, we will start with the batch of Amaze Academy exam. All subjects have a very extensive coverage in this class. And presently, you will find recorded videos available. In this recorded video session classes, you will find one more level variable contents available. Along with this, you will find chapter wise PDF notes, mock testers, weekend testers. And also personalized guidance starting from July first week available. In this content, you will find subject wise previous questions and their workout sessions. Correct AE level work sessions are available. Also, complimentary, additional content is provided freely. Handwritten notes with print access, AE mock test series, ebook rank file, online copy, and AE first rank folder's video sessions are all available. It is a very comprehensive, extensive session for you. This Amaze Academy is here. This session, you will all enjoy it. We will start the key session. The discharge through V notch is proportional to H raised to five by two, H raised to three by two, H square, H raised to one by two. Here we are choosing a V notch VR discharge equation. We know that rectangle channel is needed. Its discharge equation Q is equal to Q by three into CD into L into square root of two G into H raised to three by two. If V notch is required, our equation Q is equal to eight by fifteen into CD into tan theta by two into square root of two G into H raised to five by two. That is our equation, okay? Here we are choosing V notch. Okay, V notch is the triangular notch we have chosen. When we say V notch, the internal angle of the triangular notch is ninety degrees. Here we generally call it. If all the other terms are constant, if H raised to five by two is proportional to discharge value. Then we will choose option A, H raised to five by two is the correct answer, okay? To study rectangle notch, I will note a little point. If raised to three by two, two by three is multiplied. If rectangle notch is like this, if we do it, we will have confusion. People will think three by two, five by two. That is why I have said. At the height of the mountain, if pressure measured at its base and top are seventy four centimeters and sixty centimeters respectively. Specific weight of air is eleven point nine seven Newtons per meter. Here we say pressure measured at its base. Actually mercury terms are used. I mentioned it in the question. I think typing is omitted. Now, if you think it is clear, then we will use mercury head terms. Okay, here we have a mountain. At the base of the mountain, we will get seventy four centimeters mercury equivalent pressure. At the top, we will get sixty centimeters mercury equivalent pressure. Now, let us say the base has an atmosphere. The base has the height of the atmosphere. The height of the top is H two. If we do it, we will choose H one minus H two. What is the distance between these two? H one minus H two is the question. Now we will answer. Here, I mark the pressure in the base P one. P one is equal to rho G into H. Now, H is the height of the base. Now, the mercury terms are used. Now we will measure the mercury pressure. We will convert it to the air terms. Now, mercury's specific gravity is thirteen point five. Multiplied by thousand into nine point eight one into seventy four centimeters. Then divide by hundred G. This will be equal to, again, I will write rho G H. This is the air terms. This rho G H is the mercury terms. And that will be equal to eleven point nine seven. Because rho into G is the eleven point nine seven. Now, eleven point nine seven into H one is the answer. Similarly, P two, rho G H two is equal to thirteen point five into thousand into nine point eight one into sixty divided by hundred into eleven point nine seven into H two. This is the answer. Now, what is the H one minus H two? Now we will do it. This is the H one. I will write eleven point nine seven. Then I will add eleven point nine seven. Now thirteen point five divided by eleven point nine seven into thousand into nine point eight one into seventy four by hundred. Multiplied by minus thirteen point five into thousand into nine point eight one into sixty divided by hundred divided by eleven point nine seven. There are common terms. Now we can do it. Common terms can be extracted. If we extract them, we will get thirteen point five divided by eleven point nine seven into thousand into nine point hundred to hundred into seventy four minus sixty. This which is equal to, we will do it, multiply by fourteen. Now we will calculate the total. One five four eight approximately, we will do it, one five six zero meters is the answer. Hence, our answer is approximately one five six zero meters. Definitely, this question we cannot calculate without any problem. But we will give it to the BSC. This is the value which we cannot calculate without any problem. Which of the following is used for the measurement of discharge? Pitot tube, venturi meter, current meter, none of capable. We know it is a very simple question. Pitot tube is used to measure velocity. Venturi meter is used to discharge. Current meter is used to measure velocity. Now we will choose option B, venturi meter. Venturi meter is all we know. If this is a shape. It is an instrument. When we say venturi meter. With this venturi meter, we will have a manual meter connected. Pipe is connected like this. Now, when the pipe is connected, we will do it. We will connect the manual meter. We will connect the U tube, differential meter. After connecting, we will see how the head loss changes. The variation in the head is the measure of the venturi meter. That is why we will discharge. This is the convergent corner. This is the throat. This is the divergent corner. This is a very basic point. It is an important topic. Everyone who studies fluid mechanics should study this. For a given specific energy E, the critical depth Y C for a rectangular channel section is equal to. Here we are choosing. A rectangular channel section, critical depth relationship is chosen. Here I mark the depth of the y axis. I mark the specific energy. Then I mark the line. The specific energy is proportional to E. This line we can write that. The specific energy is proportional to E. S C proportional to Y is the value. Then I will draw my curve. After drawing this curve, minimum specific energy corresponds. This is the minimum specific energy. If minimum specific energy corresponds, the depth is the critical depth Y C. Now, we can note that E minimum is equal to. We can note that E minimum is equal to three by two into Y C. Or we can say that Y C equal to two by three into E minimum. This is our equation, okay? Now we will get the answer. Option A, two by three into E is the relationship. Electrostatic precipitators remove particulate matter sulfur dioxide hydrogen sulfide nitric oxide. Electrostatic precipitator is used to remove charged particles. On one side, positive charge is removed. On the other side, negative charge is removed. When we pass the effluent gas, we remove all charged particles. Negative charged particles are attracted on the positive side. When we look at particulate matter, there is a chance of charged particles. Sulfur dioxide hydrogen sulfide nitric oxide is electrically neutral. That is why we remove it. Impossible, almost impossible by this method. Because they are ionized. So better, we will say particulate matter is removed. When the environmental lapse rate E L R is more than adiabatic lapse rate E L R. Then the environment is said to be stable, unstable, neutral, none of capable. This is the environment lapse rate. We have the surface of the earth. The surface of the earth is one kilometer. For every kilometer, for every one kilometer we will go. We will have a temperature drop. That is why we have a very cold weather in hill stations. In northern regions, Himalayas, it is mainly because of this. For every one kilometer rise, there is a drop in temperature. Usually, we call this drop in temperature E L R. This is the environment lapse rate. This is for every one kilometer, we assume the value to be around fifteen degrees Celsius per kilometer. This is a constant value. This is generally adopted value. This is changed in each region. That is why in summer season, rainy season, even in the day, morning, noon, evening, night. This is changed. Environment lapse rate is not a constant value. But if we do not have other data, we can adopt this value. This is the environment lapse rate. Now, adiabatic lapse rate. Here we release smoke. We will release some smoke. Smoke definitely has high temperature. This is the high temperature. If you burn the fire, usually smoke comes. It is very hot. This smoke goes up to the roof. The temperature of the smoke is dropped. This temperature drop is the adiabatic lapse rate. It is usually eight degrees Celsius per kilometer. This is generally approximate value. It is not a strict value. Now we have chosen. E L R is greater than A L R. This situation is not clear. This is fifteen degrees Celsius per kilometer. This is eight degrees Celsius per kilometer. If we do it, we will choose this situation, E L R is greater than A L R. If we call it, we will call the environment unstable. Unstable condition is the most favorable condition for smoke discharge. Smoke is the most favorable condition. It is important. Here we look, E L R is always above A L R. Suppose, we say, here is fifty degrees Celsius. The temperature of the smoke is eighty degrees Celsius. This is just a random value. If we go up to the roof, the temperature is thirty five degrees Celsius. If we go up to the roof, the temperature is seventy two degrees Celsius. If we know, hot air is less dense compared to cooler gases. Hot gases are less dense. Now, we have a difference in E L R. Even if the smoke is hot, the temperature is comparatively cool. That is why the density of the smoke is less. That is why the smoke goes up to the roof. That is why humans are disturbed. The smoke goes up to the roof. Now we can say environment lapse rate is more than adiabatic lapse rate. We can call it unstable condition. We can call it super adiabatic. Super A L R is what we call. In this situation, we can say the most favorable condition for smoke release is this. Match the list one equipment with the list two pollutants. Electrostatic precipitators, cyclones, wet scrubbers, absorbers, coarse particles, fine dust, gas, sulfur dioxide. Now we will look. Definitely, cyclonic precipitators are used to remove coarse particles. Because electrostatic precipitators are used for removing fine dust. Gas or sulfur dioxide, we do not need. We cannot remove electrostatic precipitators. Now, to remove coarse particles, the best option is cyclonic precipitators. Cyclones are the name. Now, we will choose B one. A two is one slide. Now, wet scrubbers. Wet scrubbers, we can use any gas. That is why absorbers, we can use sulfur dioxide. We can use both types of materials. Activated, activated charcoal. Wet scrubbers, we can use any type of gas. We can spray incoming gas. The property of the incoming gas is liquid. Wet scrubbers, we can use them. It is simple. We have a chamber. With this chamber, we spray moisture. The gas goes away. The gas reacts to the moisture. The gas particles, liquid form, are precipitated. This is the moisture. We can do it. Spray. We can do it. Bubble. The gas condition is. The incoming moisture reacts to the gas. It reacts to the gas form and becomes liquid. This is the option B. This is the correct answer. The distribution system in water supplies is designed on the basis of average daily demand, peak hourly demand, coincident draft, greater of B and C. Here we have a lot of systems. For example, our source of supply. Our source of supply. We have maximum daily consumption. Maximum daily consumption is designed. We can call it average daily consumption. Sometimes we do it, average daily consumption is designed. Pipe mains. Pipe mains, filter, this is designed. Maximum daily draft is designed. We have. Then we have a distribution system. Distribution system is designed. Maximum hourly demand, or coincident draft. We can call B or C. Any value is added to the distribution system. Then greater of B and C is the correct answer. A raney well largely used for tapping groundwater for public supplies. Receives groundwater from its bottom, its vertical permeable sides, radial horizontal collectors. A raney well is a reinforced tube-like case. This structure is stored in wood. Then we have a lot of connection pipes. We have connected this path. After connecting, the water comes. We will do it. We have connected it and supplied it. Now, radial horizontal collectors are running well. Water supplied. The velocity of flow in a sedimentation tank is generally kept at. We have another option. Zero point three meters per second, zero point three meters per minute, zero point three meters per hour, zero point three meters per day. Here we are choosing a continuous tank. The flow-through velocity is chosen. We will study these terms. First thing, we get around seventy percentage removal of suspended solids. We get around twenty to thirty percentage, twenty to thirty percentage removal of B O D. Also, the S O R, or we can say that the surface overloading rate is equal to one thousand to one to five zero liters per hour per meter square, or is equal to twenty to thirty meter cubes per day per meter square. Along with that, we can say that the flow-through velocity V H is equal to zero point three meters per minute. This is usually the value. V H is equal to zero point three meters per minute. Option B is the correct answer. We will follow this value strictly. It is general value. Zero point three meters per minute. Which of the following processes of softening water may require recarbination? Langzoda process, hydrogen sodium cation exchange process, de-mineralization process, reverse osmosis process. What method is used for recarbination? Recarbination is the first thing. Recarbination is. We pass carbon dioxide gas through the given water. So that it may react with certain chemicals present in the water and precipitate it. What situations are used in these processes? Langzoda process. Recarbination is. C A C O three plus C O two plus H two O. This will give you C A H C O three twice or M G O H twice plus C O two gives E M G C O three. This is the chemical formed by precipitating. Now, we know what is recarbination. Calcium carbonate, magnesium dioxide. Excess presence is required. To reduce the presence, we must recarbination. We need the Langzoda process. The Langzoda process. We will look at the Langzoda process. Langzoda process is. First advantage, it reduces the corrosion of pipes due to increased alkalinity. Increased alkalinity. If we have a acidic nature. It will cause corrosion. But when the Langzoda process happens, there will be an increased amount of alkalinity. And this will actually help in protection in the corrosion of pipes. Now, the second point is, it also helps in killing bacteria because of high causticity. Causticity is very high. This is why we need to reduce bacteria removal. It also helps in removing iron and magnesium. Iron and magnesium presence is reduced. But it is a procedure for long-term exposure. Now, when the Langzoda process happens, the additional chemicals are added in the water. Now we will mark it. We need to reduce the presence of these chemicals. Carbon dioxide gas is passed. After passing, we precipitate it. In water supply, a jar test is performed to obtain the optimal dose of coagulant to be used in the coagulation process. To find out the optimal time required for flocculation to find the chlorine content of water. The correct statements are. We perform a jar test. We do not know the procedures of jar tests. We take three, four, five jars. We add necessary coagulant. Necessary coagulant at different concentrations. For example, maybe I will use X milligrams per liter. Then it will be X one milligrams per liter, this will be X two milligrams per liter. Then we will use a fan. We will stir it. Then we will set it. When the flocks are set, we will set it. We will do a lot of tests. We will complete a lot of tests for different concentrations. After doing that, the clearer water is produced. This concentration is the optimum dose. We need to conduct a jar test. Only one is the correct answer. The jar test is the optimum dose of coagulant. E D T A, otherwise ethylene diametric acid solution is used to determine. Dissolved oxygen water, residual chlorine water. E D T A, otherwise ethylene diametric acid solution is used to determine dissolved oxygen water, residual chlorine water, hardness in water, optimal dose of coagulant. Optimal dose of coagulant, we have to do it. Otherwise, we have to perform a jar test. Hardness is. It is the prevention of lather. Okay, the prevention of lather. This caused due to calcium and mainly by calcium and magnesium. Okay, calcium is the main element of magnesium ions. It is the main reason for hardness. However, iron, magnesium, elements of strong materials. It is the main reason. Now, we have to look at this. E D T A test is required. E D T A test is used to measure hardness. We have to use E B T, E B T otherwise. Eryochrome black T, Eryochrome black T is used as an indicator. We use it as an indicator. E B T otherwise Eryochrome black T. This indication point is the wine red, wine red, blue color. Our titration point is. The most common cause of acidity in water is carbon dioxide, organic acids, mineral acids, oxides of nitrogen or sulfur. Acidity is the main reason. Carbon dioxide is the main reason. Carbon dioxide is the most common cause of acidity in water. Photosynthesis, perspiration and decomposition all contribute towards the formation of carbon dioxide. And it also further contribute towards the pH fluctuations. This influence is more measurable in bodies of water with higher rates of respiration and decomposition. If large water bodies have this influence, the carbon dioxide's percentage is visible. The acidity percentage is visible. The main reason is. When water reacts, the carbon dioxide forms, carbonic acid is very weak. It is a very weak acid and mildly weak acid. We call it a carbonic acid. So, weak acid is the reason why the pH of the water increases. It is the reason why it is acidic. A rectangular sedimentation tank having dimensions twenty meter long, five meter wide and three meter deep passes three million liters of water every day. The detention period of the tank would be two point six, three hours, two point four hours, two point one hours. Detention time is the theoretical time required for flow from inlet to outing. We have a triangle. The inlet will come to the tank. The outing will come to the tank. This is the detention time. Detention time is chosen. Now, we have to go to the equation. Volume of tank is equal to discharge into detention time. So, we have to find the detention time is equal to volume divided by discharge. Okay, we have to find the volume. Twenty into five into three divided by discharge. Thirty million liters of water per day. This is one liter. It is zero point zero zero one meter cube. So, we have to find three into ten raised to six liters. That is one million. Multiplied by zero point zero zero one, we have to find three thousand meter cubes per day. So, we have to substitute three thousand meter cubes per day. It is a meter cube per day. So, we have to divide it. Zero point one days is the answer. We have the option days. Hours is the answer. Zero point one into twenty four, two point four hours is the answer. Hence, the correct option is two point four hours. A raw water supply of twelve into ten raised to six liters per day is to be disinfected with a chlorine dose of one milligram per liter. The quantity of bleaching powder containing thirty percentage available chlorine required for disinfection per year would be in kilograms. Fifteen thousand six hundred, fourteen thousand six hundred, fourteen thousand two hundred, fifteen thousand one hundred. This is. We have to find the chlorine dose. We have to disinfected twelve into ten raised to six liters per day. In bleaching powder, there is only thirty percentage availability. If so, how much kilograms of bleaching powder do we need for a wash up? Given chlorine demand is what? One milligram per liter. Total water to be treated is twelve into ten raised to six liters per day. Now, total chlorine required per day is. So, one milligram is required. Twelve into ten raised to six liters is what? Twelve into ten raised to six into one, that is equal to twelve into ten raised to six milligrams, which is equal to. Fifteen kilograms is required. We have to find it every day. Fifteen kilograms per day is required. Now, we require twelve kilograms of chlorine per day. Available chlorine in bleaching powder is what? If so, bleaching powder required per day is what? Twelve divided by zero point three is equal to forty kilograms. That is, how many percent is in one kilogram? Okay, if so, how many percent is in fifteen kilograms? We have to find how many kilograms is in one kilogram? Thirty percentage, that is, we have to find thirty kilograms. So, if so, fifteen kilograms is required. Fifteen divided by zero point three is equal to forty kilograms is required. Okay, now, bleaching powder required per year is what? Forty into three sixty five, that is equal to fourteen thousand six hundred kilograms. This is the requirement for year. What is the answer? Fourteen thousand six hundred is the answer. While designing sewers, the flow velocity at the full design depth is generally kept at about one meter per second, zero point five meters per second, one point five meters per second less than zero point three meters per second. Usually, we keep the value one meters per second. Okay, we have to use self cleaning velocity. The minimum value is usually what? One point zero meters per second to one point two meters per second is the usual value. As compared to slows and filters, rapids and filters give slower filtration rate, higher filtration rate, lesser efficiency in removal of bacteria, higher efficiency in removal of bacteria. Of the above statements that have statements are one nine three, two nine three, one nine four, two nine four. Definitely, we have to choose option one. Okay, so we have to choose. We have to choose A and C. Okay, there is definitely higher filtration rate. That is why rapids and filters are. Now, there is of course lesser efficiency in removal of bacteria. Two and three are small. Option B is the correct answer. Our slow sand filter's bacteria removal efficiency. Slow sand filter is around approximately ninety nine percentage. Ninety eight or ninety eight, ninety nine percentage is the value. Okay, there is a little gap. When the water comes, it has a good deal of bacteria. But when you come to rapid sand filters, we have to find around seventy percentage. We have to find the bacteria removal efficiency. That is why chlorine is required. It is a must. When rapids and filters come, chlorine or disinfection is a must. A polluted stream undergoes self purification in four zones. Zone of degradation, zone of recovery, zone of active decomposition, zone of clean water. The correct sequence of these zones is. We have to flow a river. Flowing river is the direction of flow. We have to discharge a river. We have to discharge a receiver. Okay, after that, initially, what is happening? The river water is happening. What are the problems? Okay, what is the correct sequence? Okay, we have to look at this. First zone is the zone of degradation. The first zone is the zone of degradation. Okay, the zone of degradation is the first term. We have to choose A, B, C. Now, the zone of degradation is the content of dissolved oxygen is decreasing. Okay, it is decreasing. The C V has direct contact into river. It is dissolved oxygen is suddenly dropping. Now, after that, we have to find the zone of active decomposition. In this situation, dissolved oxygen is forty percentage. So, in that zone, aquatic animals will die. Now, after that, the active decomposition stage is decomposed. Then, we have to find the zone of recovery. That is, we have to dilute the water. And other microorganisms, decompose the waste. After that, when we have to find the zone of clear water. When we find the zone of clear water, dissolved oxygen is required level. The aquatic animal's survival is possible. This is the situation. Now, when we come here, we have one zone of degradation. After that, we have to find the zone of active decomposition, then zone of recovery, then zone of clear water. Okay, so we have to find one, three, two, four is the correct option. Okay, option A is the correct answer. Given that, a given use of ninety eight percent moisture is X times more bulky than with ninety five percent moisture. Or X is ninety nine by ninety eight, two point five, one plus ninety eight by ninety nine, one plus ninety nine by ninety eight. This is the value of X. We have to look at this. As we know that in a sludge digestion tank or different moisture content in the sludge, the volumes are will be different and follows the below equations. V two by V one is equal to hundred minus P one divided by hundred minus P two. We have to find V one and V two. We have found the conditions for sludge digestion tank. We have to find V one and V two. Volume of sludge, P one and two, P two is the moisture content. Okay, we have to substitute the equation. It is given that V one is equal to X times V two. Okay, we have to find the X. We have to find V two divided by X into V two is equal to hundred minus ninety eight divided by hundred minus ninety five. If so, hundred minus ninety, we have to find two by five. If so, one by X will be equal to two by five or we can write that X will be equal to five by two or that is equal to two point five. This is the correct option. Option B, two point five is the correct answer. Next, the list one, impurities to be removed from the seaweed and with the listed two treatment units used. Okay, larger floating matter, suspended inorganic matter, suspended organic matter, dissolved organic matter. Electric filter, primary clarifier, witch chamber, screens. Okay, this is the large floating matter. It should be definitely removed. Otherwise, the procedure, the cleaning procedure. Okay, now, the suspended inorganic matter. Suspended inorganic matter is used to remove the grit chamber. Okay, grit chamber is used. Grit is not allowed. We have to decompose it. We have to decompose it or wash it. Type substances are, for example, bone chips. That is, coffee grounds, tea grounds. These are used to do. Grit chamber is used. Grit is removed. Actually, organic grit is also used. Even if the grit is inorganic, there is no relationship. Organic nature is available. But usually, we say inorganic matter is used. Now, suspended organic matter, definitely, we have to do. The primary clarifier is used. Poorly removed is not, but well removed is available. Now, dissolved organic matter is used. Trickle in filter is used. We have to decompose it. This is the primary clarifier or grit chamber. Okay, so we have to use trickle in filter. We have to decompose the bacteria. Okay, this is the correct option. This is option A. Which one of the manometer is most sensitive? Vertical tube type micromanometer, inclined micromanometer, simple manometer, differential manometer. The manometers are sensitive. We have learned the term micromanometer. It is a very sensitive type manometer. This micromanometer. Okay, we have to connect a pipe. We have to provide a small tank. Now, after that, this tank is. We have to call it a micromanometer. Now, the micromanometer is sensitive. Actually, vertical type micromanometer. The answer is vertical type micromanometer. What is inclined type micromanometer? Inclined type micromanometer is similar to a micromanometer. It is just a difference. This is. The legs of this micromanometer are inclined. Now, making some angle theta with the horizontal. Okay, now, the question is. Micromanometers are very sensitive. This is the vertical type or inclined micromanometer. Eight of them are sensitive. You have to think. We have to say the answer. Definitely, inclined micromanometer is sensitive. Okay, the reason is simple. When we apply pressure, this liquid against the gravity is carried. But when we apply pressure, this liquid is in inclined direction. What is it? In inclined direction, it is carried. You have to guard your house. If you have stairs, it is carried. If you are trying to open the door in your house. It is carried. The reason is directly against gravity. At that time, a staircase is built. A inclined path is built. Okay, if so, we have to say the answer. Inclined micromanometer is the correct answer. For domestic seaweed, the ratio of five day BOD at twenty degrees Celsius to ultimate BOD is about. We have found five day BOD. There is no value, but the ratio is the ultimate BOD ratio. Okay, we have to find the answer. BOD five at twenty degrees Celsius is given by BOD five is equal to ultimate BOD into one minus ten raised to negative K D into T. This is the D because it is the first one, but actually, it is K D into T. BOD five is equal to our ultimate BOD, T is the time in days and K D is equal to deoxygenation rate constant.
The value of KD determines the speed of BOD reaction without influencing the ultimate BOD. KD is found to vary with the temperature of sewage, and this residue is approximately given by the equation. KDT is equal to KD twenty into one point zero four seven, whole raised to T minus twenty degrees Celsius, okay?
We have, K, okay? The term, okay? Okay? We have, okay? Suppose, our BOD, okay? And rate, okay? T equal to twenty degrees Celsius, okay? If that is, definitely, a curve, T greater than twenty degrees Celsius, okay? I mean, possibly, higher rate, okay? T less than twenty degrees Celsius, okay? Possibly, lower rate, okay? Which means that, with increasing temperature, to a certain extent, the BOD rate constant will be higher, okay? Now, here we look, KD is given by the equation, KDT is equal to KD twenty into one point zero four seven into, uh, one point zero four seven, whole raised to T minus twenty degrees Celsius, okay? Here, KD value at twenty degree is actually, or, approximately, it is given as zero point one, okay? This value, we can, okay? Now, this, we have, okay? BOD five is equal to BOD ultimate into one minus ten raised to negative zero point one into five, or we will get, BOD five is equal to zero point six eight three seven BODU, so, BOD five is approximately sixty eight percentage of ultimate BOD. Here, sixty eight percentage, okay? Sixty eight percentage, okay? Approximately, okay? Two by three, okay? Two by three, okay? So, we have, okay? Two by three, okay?
BOD is preferred to COD because, BOD represents both carbonic acid and nitrogen, organic matter, while COD, main, carbonic matter only. BOD test is easier to perform and gives more reliable results. BOD relates specifically to protrusable organic matter. COD relates to the impurities which can only be removed by chemical treatment.
So, because, we prefer BOD, okay? Definitely, option B, okay? BOD test is easier to perform, okay? Because, COD test, okay? BOD test, we can, okay? COD test, okay? Biochemical oxygen demand, okay? Chemical oxygen demand, okay? Okay, COD, okay? It represents everything, other, all treatment, all treatment, okay? All type oxygen demand, okay? It could be organic, it could be inorganic, okay? All, okay? Here, BOD, we have, specifically, the, okay? BOD relates specifically to protrusable organic matter, okay? When you, okay? This protrusable, organic matter, okay? It is dangerous, okay? That is, our bacteria growth, okay? So, that is, okay? Because, we prefer BOD.
A two percent solution of sewage sample is incubated for five days at twenty degrees Celsius. Depletion of oxygen was found to be five ppm. BOD five days at twenty degrees Celsius of sewagees.
This is, a direct, okay? We have, okay? Dilution factor, okay? Dilution factor is equal to hundred divided by personal solution is equal to hundred divided by two, which is equal to fifteen. And I have, okay? Now, depletion of oxygen, okay? Now, BOD five, okay? About depletion of oxygen into dilution factor, that is equal to five into two fifty, which is given as two fifty ppm. Our BOD of the sewage, okay? Two fifty ppm, okay? Option A, is correct, okay? Two fifty ppm.
The type of flow in which the velocity at every particle varies from point to point, or every instant to instant, in the direction and magnitude is called as.
Very simple, okay? The type of flow in which velocity is changing instantly and continuously. That is, we call it turbulent flow, okay? What is laminar flow, okay? Laminar flow, okay? It is, in the narrow, double flow, okay? Very smooth, okay? Very smooth, and we can say that, there will be no intermixing between fluid layers, okay? That is, we call it laminar flow, okay? Uniform flow, okay? We can, there is no change in velocity, okay? There is no change in velocity. Now, steady flow, okay? No change in flow parameters with respect to time, okay? We can, uh, do you by dot T is equal to zero, then, dot P by dot T is equal to zero. Like, a lot, uh, terms, with respect to time, there is no change, okay? Either flow parameter, or velocity, pressure, or density, whatever it may be, it doesn't change with respect to time, that is, we call it steady flow, okay? Double flow, okay? That is, we can, before, hydraulic, okay?
Pick up the correct statement from the following. In incompressible flow, the density of fluid remains constant. In compressible flow, the density of fluid changes from point to point. In uniform flow, the velocity of fluid does not change with respect to length of flow direction.
Definitely, this statement, the first statement, is correct, okay? Incompressible flow, okay? The fluid remains, density, okay? Constant, okay? Compressible flow, okay? The second statement, okay? The density of fluid changes from point to point, okay? Compressible flow, okay? Usually, water, okay? That is, gases, okay? Water, okay? Almost incompressible, okay? Ideal fluid, okay? Practically incompressible, okay? We can, practically incompressible, theoretically compressible, okay? Because, okay? Pressure, okay? We can, almost impossible, okay? Okay, eleven, ten, twelve, eleven kilograms, okay? This, okay? Okay, now, in uniform flow, the velocity of fluid does not change with respect to length of flow direction. This is, correct statement, okay? If that is, we have, okay? Option D, all of the, all statements, okay?
Leashat is a colored liquid that comes out of septic tanks, immo tanks, sanitary landfills, aerated leachants.
Leashat, okay? Sanitary landfill, okay? How is it, okay?
Suppose, this is ground level, and now, so, this, okay? Okay, this landfill, we have, okay? We have, okay? A little, okay? This rainwater, okay? This, okay? Okay? The landfill, okay? Then, the, the, components, okay? Sometimes, chemically reactive, okay? Otherwise, it is mixed up. Mixed up, okay? The, okay? This liquid, okay? Very dangerous, okay? This, okay? Surface water source, okay? Pollute, okay? Okay? Ground water, okay? Very good, okay? Surface water, okay? That is, okay? Aquatic animals, troubles, okay? All, okay? Mixing, okay? Landfills, okay? A drawback, okay? This, okay? If for a two dimensional flow, the stream function is given by, psi is equal to two X, okay? The velocity at the point three comma six is? Option A, six, option B, twelve, option C, eighteen, option D, thirteen point four two.
This question, okay? We can, okay? For example, option D, okay? We can, okay? Because, okay? You can, okay? We have, okay? We have, okay? Here, we can, okay? Do five by do X is equal, we can, okay? Uh, we can, two Y, okay? Do square side divided by do X square, okay? Secondary, okay? Similarly, do five by do X, okay? That is, two X, okay? Now, do S, do, do square five, uh, sorry, X, okay? Uh, sorry, we have, okay? Why? We have, okay? So, zero plus zero, definitely, okay? The application, okay? Uh, that is, okay? Functions, okay? You have to be careful, because, uh, that is, functions, okay? Questions, okay? We can, okay? Uh, now, if, uh, other, okay? Uh, that is, actually, very functional, okay? We can, okay? Now, here, we can, uh, stream function, okay? V is equal to negative do five by do X, U is equal to do five by do Y, okay? Now, here, already, we have, okay? We have, two Y, okay? So, B, okay? Negative two Y, okay? U, okay? Two X, okay? Okay, okay? Okay, U, okay? Two, uh, two X, okay? Now, here, point, okay? Point three comma six, okay? About X coordinate, okay? Three M, Y coordinate, okay? Here, B, okay? Negative two into six, okay? U, okay? Two into three, okay? Is equal to negative twelve, okay? Now, our final velocity will be is equal to V square plus U square, which is equal to square root of one forty four plus, uh, six in the square, thirty six, okay? We can, okay? One forty four plus thirty six, okay? One eighty, okay? Actually, we can, okay? Uh, because, we can, okay? Uh, but, we can, okay? Almost, okay? Thirteen point four two, okay? Again, P S A, okay? This is, okay?
Which of the following statement is incorrect? Modern Francis turbines are inward mixer flow reaction turbines. Francis turbines operate under medium heads and require medium quantity of water. The head acting on the Francis turbine is fully transformed into kinetic energy, leaving no pressure head. In Francis turbine, difference of pressure between guidewains and the runner creates a reaction pressure.
This is, okay? We can, okay? Modern Francis turbines are inward mixer flow reaction turbines, definitely, okay? We can, okay? Turbines, okay? Francis turbine, okay? Inward flow, okay? We can, okay? Ready inward flow, okay? So, mixer flow, okay? Ready inward flow, okay? They are definitely reaction turbines, okay? Now, uh, poor, okay? But, still, they are classified under reaction turbines, okay? Now, Francis turbines operate under medium heads and require medium quantity of water, okay? So, we can, uh, this, okay? Okay, we can, okay? That is, okay? This, okay? Both, okay? Okay? Because, okay? Now, the option C, the head acting on the Francis turbine is fully transformed into kinetic energy, leaving no pressure, okay? This is, okay? Because, okay? Uh, this statement, uh, this, uh, Francis turbine, okay? A certain amount of energy is converted into pressure, and certain is converted into kinetic, okay? So, pressure and kinetic, okay? A turbine, okay? The majority part is pressure, minority part is kinetic, okay? Majority is pressure, minority is kinetic, okay? So, uh, this option C, okay? Now, we can, okay? In Francis turbine, different pressure between the guidewains and the, creates a reaction pressure, definitely, okay? If a turbine, okay? The turbine, okay? I have, just, I have, okay? Just, okay? This, okay? This is, okay? This reaction pressure, okay? This reaction pressure, okay? This, okay? This turbines, okay?
In stabilization ponds, the sewage is treated by aerobic bacteria only, algae only, dual action of aerobic bacteria and algae sedimentation. Stabilization pond, or, lagunes or stabilization ponds, are large, shallow ponds designed to treat wastewater through the interaction of sunlight bacteria and algae. Algae grow using energy from the sun and carbon dioxide and inorganic compounds created by the bacteria in water. During the process of photosynthesis, the algae releases oxygen needed by the aerobic bacteria. Mechanical aerators are sometimes installed to supply yet more oxygen, though reducing the required size of the pond. Sludge deposit in the pond must even, eventually be removed by dredging. Algae remaining in the pond effluents can be removed by filtration or by a combination of chemical treatment and settling. The stabilization of organic material is carried out by bacterial oxidation or photosynthetic reduction of algae.
We can, a, like, a, okay? A pond, we can create, okay? Upon, okay? We can, our wastewater, okay? We can, okay? A, okay? Okay, now, sunlight, okay? This, okay? And, okay? Here, our wastewater, okay? Bacteria, okay? In turn, uh, algae, okay? Now, notice in the sense, uh, oxygen, okay? Algae, okay? This, okay? Here, okay? Okay? That is, okay? Now, if, okay? This is, okay? Uh, lagunes, or, stabilization ponds, okay? This, bacteria, okay? The, okay? It is the dual action of aerobic bacteria and algae, okay? Correct, okay?
The maximum efficiency of BOD removal is achieving oxidation pond, oxidation ditch, aerated lagunes, trickling filters.
Here, we have, a lot, types of methods, okay? This method, okay? Efficiency, okay? This is, okay? We have, okay? Method, okay?
For example, in trickling filters, we have around seventy five percentage BOD removal efficiency. Now, when we go for aerated lagunes, we have around sixty five to ninety percentage BOD removal efficiency. Oxidation ditch has around ninety eight percentage BOD removal efficiency. Oxidation ponds have around ninety percentage BOD removal efficiency. Of course, the, oxidation ditch, okay? Eighty, okay? Uh, treatment method. Select the secondary air pollutants among the following. Ozon and carbon monoxide, peroxyl acetal nitrate and ozone, peroxyl acetal nitrate and carbon monoxide, carbon monoxide and sulfur dioxide.
Primary pollutants, secondary pollutants, we have, okay? Primary pollutants, okay? They are directly emitted from the source. For example, carbon dioxide, okay? Sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, okay? We have, a, activity, okay? The, okay? Directly formed, okay? Primary pollutants, okay? Secondary pollutants, okay? Primary pollutants plus air, okay? Or, moisture.